He was always got there early.
Mary, you have a different time zone? Is that why we're in the office?
We gotta get underway here. It's seven o'clock. I'm calling to order the meeting of the Sun Prairie Common Council for the evening of June fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. Elena, would you please read the roll?
Um, bowling. Here. Crombie?
Here.
Jacobs?
Here.
Yokeish?
Here.
McAvoy?
Yes.
Polinsky?
Here.
Stevens?
Stevens, oh, she wasn't here yet.
Um, Stacker, and I'll keep an eye on Stevens.
All right, so we have seven of our city council members. We're fortunate. Number eight is likely to be joining us shortly. She was here with us before. So with that, we have a legal meeting and we are free to proceed, and I would like to proceed to the pledge of allegiance. Would you please rise and join me in the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Now, the first item on our agenda is the consent agenda. I would appreciate a motion to approve the consent agenda items. Is there a motion?
There is. Polinsky will move to approve.
Thank you, Mary. And a second?
Crombie will second it.
Thank you, Maureen. So all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? So we have approved the consent agenda, and that brings us down to citizen appearances and public comments. And earlier this afternoon, I had from Don McDermott word that John Davies uh, had submitted some comments and wishes to address us. So John is interested in item from the Plan Commission. So when we get to the Plan Commission, I will give him the opportunity to speak. Um, otherwise, is there anybody else waiting now down that you're aware of? I meant to check the uh, participants for hands. I see nobody, so apparently there is not done.
Yeah, just Mr. Davies.
Okay, and we'll pick up John when we get to that. So I have two proclamations this evening. The first one is going to be World Elder Abuse Awareness Day, and I'm gonna present this to Bob Power from the Colonial Club. And I see Bob is with us. So Bob, I'm gonna read the proclamation presented to you, and then if you have a few words you wish to share with us, we'd like to hear them at that point. So here it is. Whereas older adults deserve to be treated with respect and dignity and to enable them to serve as leaders, mentors, volunteers, and vital participating members of our community. And whereas in two thousand and six, the International Network for the Prevention of Elder Abuse is in support of the United Nations International Plan of Action proclaimed a day to recognize the significance of elder abuse as a public health and human rights issue. And whereas the National Center on Elder Abuse, NCEA, and the City of Sun Prairie recognize the importance of taking action to raise awareness, prevent and address elder abuse, and as our population lives longer, we are presented with an opportunity to think about our collective needs and future as a nation. Whereas ageism and social isolation are major causes of elder abuse in the United States. And recognizing that it is up to all of us to ensure that proper social structures exist so people can retain community and societal connections, which reduces the likelihood of abuse. And whereas presenting abuse of older adults through maintaining and improving social supports like senior centers, human services, and transportation will allow everyone to continue to live as independently as possible and contribute to the life and vibrancy of our communities. And whereas there is a justice. Where, excuse me, whereas where there is justice, there will be no abuse. Therefore, NCEA urges all people to restore justice by honoring older people and putting an end to abuse. Now therefore, I, Paul Esser, by virtue of authority vested in me as mayor, behalf of the City of Sun Prairie, declare June fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-one as World Elder Abuse Awareness Day. Encourage all of our community's members to recognize and celebrate older adults and their ongoing contribution to the success and vitality of our country. So Bob, I am presenting this to you on behalf of the City Council and myself and the city government in support of the need to be aware of elder abuse. So if you have some comments, I'd like to hear them.
Thank you, Mayor Esser, and all of you at the City of Sun Prairie. We appreciate it. Um. You know, I zeroed in on those words, isolation. And if anything, we learned in the last fourteen months, sixteen months, whatever it's been, since the pandemic began, I think Maureen in her regular daytime job can join me in this. The isolation issue is just ripe for all sorts of abuse, whether it be financial, emotional, um, certainly physical. Um. It's, it's been a rough year for everybody. It's been a rough year for our older people who are truly isolated. Uh, they didn't have people coming in, um, they didn't see family members. And while that's not that unusual, I would just say again, that's the primary reason we exist. You know, the Colonial Club has been here for over fifty years now to make sure people can live as long as it's healthy in their own homes, live successfully and safely. And then when that ends, that we can help them transition to whatever it might be to make sure they're safe in their elder years. So your support as the City of Sun Prairie for the past fifty years, um, to the Colonial Club has been, you know, a vital component to making sure we keep our older adults as safe as we can. You know, we've committed to the next fifty years and um, we thank you again for this recognition of this important topic. And continue our pledge to work with you and your city staff, police, fire, and making sure that we're doing all we can to make sure people are safe. So thank you.
Thank you, Bob. And Bob, thanks to you for your efforts, for your staff's efforts, and for the club's efforts in this community. We appreciate what you're doing and the voice that you bring to these issues on behalf of the entire community. Thank you, Bob.
See you Saturday.
Yep, Saturday, big day, Strawberry Fest, and you have strawberries this year, right? Well, you didn't know it was coming, Bob.
Oh, what? What? Yes, it is Saturday. And no, it's been a dang good strawberry season. So ten AM, fresh berries from Creek Bed Pharmacy out of Pointe. They'll be there ready for you to purchase.
Ten to three.
See you there, Bob.
Thanks. Just mention something? So if we would have been, if we would have been meeting live, I would have had these purple little ribbons to give to everybody on the council or whoever was in the room, um, in honor of elder abuse. I do have some numbers to give out, too. It's just very short. Um, so basically, there's fifty-two million people over the age of sixty-five. And it's supposed to double by two thousand and forty. Um, and elder abuse is a growing problem across Wisconsin, across the nation. Um, it's just, and there's just a small fraction of cases that are reported, you know, especially like when Bob was talking about isolation with um, the, you know, with people not being able to see or to see each other. Um, but we have to emphasize the importance of recognizing and reporting abuse, neglect, and exploitation to ensure that victims are able to get the support that they need. Um, so the incidence of elder abuse from two thousand and one to two thousand and twenty-one have actually tripled. Um, and if you suspect that you're a victim, that you, that they are a victim or know someone who is a victim, there is an elder abuse hotline number, and that's one eight three three five eight six zero one oh seven. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you. We will move on to our next proclamation. This is Making Sun Prairie Fun City. Now, you may have heard about that. You've gotten information from uh, Kristin Grisham on it. So I'm gonna read this, and then I believe I'm going to present it. I see several people here. So Kristin, Holly, Deb, Cindy, and Chad from the Parks Recreation and Forestry. I think that's everybody, isn't it, Kristin?
We got Parker Rex.
Oh, sorry, Parker. Where were you? I missed you. I thought you were one of the council members, I guess. So, you know, it could have been Steve with his um.
I know.
Baseball.
Yeah.
All right. So this is a serious undertaking because it's getting a lot of attention in Dane County. A lot of media attention. Kristin and I were doing an interview this morning. You may be done some others. Kristin, I'm doing one tomorrow morning. Um, my children even. I, I know things are, are getting attention when my children, none of who live in um, Sun Prairie begin communicating about it. I know that it's reaching out and they talk about their friends. So I'm gonna read this proclamation, and then I'm gonna present this to all of you. And then Kristin, are you gonna be the representative to speak? All right, I knew we could count on you. Here we go. Whereas having fun and taking time to purposefully do things that provide amusement and enjoyment is critical for mental health, personal well-being, and quality of life. And whereas July is recognized nationally as Parks and Recreation Month and is a time to focus on fun by discovering and rediscovering the activities, events, spaces, and places that bring us the most joy. And whereas Sun Prairie has a number of public facilities, amenities, parks, and attractions that provide opportunities to have fun, such as the Family Aquatic Center, the brand-new splash pad and playground at Wetmore Park, the Sun Prairie Historical Library and Museum, the Sun Prairie Media Center, and the Sun Prairie Public Library. And whereas Sun Prairie is home to a number of highly popular events, such as the annual Christmas tree lighting and fire truck parade, Jimmy the Groundhog's Annual Groundhog's Day Prognostication, the Sun Prairie Farmer's Market, concerts and movies in the park, Streets of Sun Prairie, the Multicultural Fair, the Sweet Corn Festival, and more. And whereas Sun Prairie has a vast business and nonprofit community that works hard to engage the community and provide opportunities for fun, such as shopping, dining, health and wellness programs and services, family engagement programs and services, and more. And whereas Sun Prairie is regionally known for its endless opportunities to have fun and recrey. And whereas Sun Prairie is a place where all are welcome and all are encouraged to take advantage of all the fun to be had in our community. Now, therefore, I, Paul Esser, Mayor of the City of Sun Prairie, do hereby proclaim that in honor of Parks and Recreation Month, the City of Sun Prairie shall be named the City of Fun Prairie during the month of July. In testimony thereof, I have hereon to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Sun Prairie to be affixed on this, the fifteenth day of June, twenty twenty-one. So all of you, I am presenting this proclamation. Parker is especially enthusiastic about this, and I like that. And uh, and, and Kristin, with that, if you have some words for us, we'd love to hear them.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So um, it is no secret, as you listed in the proclamation, that Sun Prairie or Fun Prairie um, has endless opportunities for fun uh, for individuals and families of all ages. And while the name change really is a playful way to celebrate Parks and Recreation Month and get people excited about our community, the truth is that Sun Prairie, Fun Prairie, is truly Fun Prairie twelve months out of the year. Since the inception of this kind of wild idea to change the name of the city, I have spent a lot of time thinking about just the opportunities within our own community that promote amusement and joy for people. And when taking that step back and thinking about all we have to offer, it really is incredible to think that you could basically never leave the Sun, the City of Sun Prairie and realistically never get bored. Um, we do have an amazing business community that works hard to provide opportunities for those who work, live, and play in Sun Prairie. We have an amazing um, public infrastructure of parks, um, the museum, the library, the media center, um, parks and recreation programs, and then nonprofits um, that support opportunities. I mean, Explore Children's Museum is one example. We have the Dream Park Community Schools, YMCA, um, just as a few. So that really is something that is truly unique to a community and something that should be celebrated and highlighted. So what does the name change mean for the City of Sun Prairie for July? Well, um, the Wetmore Park Splash Pad and Playground Rubbing Cutting Ceremony will be kind of the kickoff to Parks and Recreation Month and the official name change. Um, beginning July first, a digital map will be available to highlight all the fun activities happening throughout the month of July in the City of Fun Prairie. And individuals and families will be invited to participate in a month-long game of Fun Prairie Bingo featuring events, activities, attractions, promotions, and specials um, that can be found throughout the month, and then people can redeem their bingo cards for prizes. Um, you may also see city social media pages that reflect the name change, staff signature lines, yard signs, window clings, um, donning the Fun Prairie logo and more. So with that, I want to welcome anybody and everybody to come take advantage of all the fun in the City of Fun Prairie.
Steve, did you wish to say something?
No, I was just gonna say, um, also the scavenger hunt. Did you want to talk about that?
Yeah, so um, then, yeah, so that's a good point. Um, the, we're kind of book, book, we've got bookends on um, Fun Prairie. So the grand opening of the splash pad is kind of the start, and then the culminating event is the scavenger race that the Historical Museum and Library is putting together. Um, and Parker and Rex would probably be able to talk about it a little bit more. But um, I think Parker is, is busy and doesn't talk very much, so.
Well, good. Well, good. Thank you all for being here with us, and thank you all for undertaking this effort. It's exciting. We'll look forward to what's gonna happen in the month of July. Thank you all. We are gonna move on. Yeah, that Parker, he's into this. That guy has a live wire. I don't know if it's a guy or not, but it's a live wire. All right, we're gonna move on now to committee reports, and we're gonna start, Steve, with the committee of the whole.
Thank you, Your Honor. Yes, tough act to follow after Parker Rex. Um, first item, uh, resolution to approve a budget amendment um, for the Community Development Block Grant Coronavirus Award. Um, earlier this evening, the Committee of the Whole met to consider a budget amendment for the Community Development Block Grant Coronavirus CDBG-CV for two hundred thousand dollars. Uh, this budget amendment um, is a um, non-matching, no cost to the no cost sharing and such, and it will be uh, recommended as follows. The Community Development Block Grant will be uh, an increase to Grants and Donations Fund, a federal grant revenue of two hundred thousand dollars. Increased Grants and Donations Grant Expenses of two hundred thousand dollars. So it'll be more or less a pass-through. And with that, I would like to make a motion to approve.
All right.
I'll second it.
Okay, and now we're into discussion on that. Is there any discussion? I see none, Elena. Let's get the roll.
Bowling?
Aye.
Crombie?
Aye.
Jacobs?
Aye.
Yokeish?
Aye.
McAvoy?
Aye.
Polinsky?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Stacker?
Aye.
And that passes eight zero.
Right. Thank you. Next item is the initial resolution authorizing general obligation bonds in an amount not to exceed two million nine hundred and ten thousand for sanitary sewer projects. Uh, again, common council met to discuss the according to chapter sixty-seven Wisconsin statutes, general obligation bonds in an amount not to exceed two million nine hundred and ten thousand for the purpose of paying for sewage system projects consisting of sanitary sewer system extensions and improvements. And with that, I would like to make a motion to approve.
McAvoy seconds.
All right, and we're into discussion on that item. Is there any discussion? I see none. Let's do the rolls.
Bowling?
Aye.
Crombie?
Aye.
Jacobs?
Aye.
Yokeish?
Aye.
McAvoy?
Aye.
Polinsky?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Stacker?
Aye.
Passes eight zero.
Thank you. Next item, initial resolution authorizing general obligation bonds in an amount not to exceed two million ten thousand dollars for stormwater projects. Again, the common council met to discuss pursuant to chapter sixty-seven of Wisconsin statutes, general obligation bonds in the amount not to exceed two hundred or two million ten thousand for the public purpose of paying for the cost of sewage system projects consisting of stormwater management projects. And with that, I would like to make a motion to approve.
And I'll second it.
Second, and then we're into discussion. Is there any discussion on that item? I see none, Elena. Let's do the roll.
Bowling?
Aye.
Crombie?
Aye.
Jacobs?
Aye.
Yokeish?
Aye.
McAvoy?
Aye.
Um, Polinsky?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Stacker?
Aye.
And that passes eight zero.
Okay, next item is resolution directing publication of notice to electors relating to bond issues. Again, the council, common council met, and it is now necessary that the initial resolu- resolution be published to afford notice to residents of the City of Sun Prairie of the adoption of the bond issues. And with that, I would like to make a motion to approve.
Second?
McAvoy seconds.
Thank you, and we're into discussion. Is there any discussion? See none, Elena. Let's do the roll.
Bowling?
Aye.
Crombie?
Aye.
Jacobs?
Aye.
Yokeish?
Aye.
McAvoy?
Aye.
Polinsky?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Stacker?
Aye.
And that passes eight zero.
Thank you. Next item is a resolution providing for the sale not to exceed four million nine hundred and twenty thousand general obligation corporate purpose bond series twenty twenty-one B. Again, the common council met to authorize the general issuance of general obligation bonds for the following purposes. Not to exceed amounts of two million nine hundred and ten thousand for sewage system projects consisting of sanitary sewer system extensions and improvements. And second, uh, in the amount not to exceed two million ten thousand dollars for sewage system projects consisting of stormwater management projects. And with that, I would like to make a motion to approve.
There's a second?
Stevens seconds.
And we're into discussion. Is there any discussion? There is none, Elena. Let's do it.
Bowling?
Aye.
Crombie?
Aye.
Jacobs?
Aye.
Yokeish?
Aye.
McAvoy?
Aye.
Polinsky?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Stacker?
Aye.
And that passes eight zero.
Thank you. Okay, next item, resolution providing for the sale of approximately eight thou- eight mil- oh, eight million seven hundred and forty-five thousand dollar general obligation promissory note series twenty twenty-one C. Again, the common council met to discuss the need for approximately eight million seven hundred and forty-five thousand dollars for public purposes, including paying of the cost of street reconstruction, city facility projects and improvements, park improvements, the acquisition of vehicles and equipment, and refunding obligations of the city from twenty fourteen, I believe. With that, I would like to make a motion to approve.
There's a second? Teresa, Stevens? All right, discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, Elena, let's do it.
Bowling?
Aye.
Crombie?
Aye.
Jacobs?
Aye.
Yokeish?
Aye.
McAvoy?
Aye.
Polinsky?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Stacker?
Aye.
And that passes eight zero.
Thank you. Next, resolution approving the Finance Division reorganization. Again, earlier today, the common council met to discuss the reorganization of the Finance Division. The recommendation is that the budget analyst be replaced by a controller, a promotion from accountant to senior accountant, and a promotion from receptionist to financial services technician. With that, I would like to make a motion to approve.
There's a second?
McAvoy seconds.
Thank you. Discussion? Any discussion? No? Elena, let's do it.
Bowling?
Aye.
Um, Crombie?
Aye.
Aye, I'm on the O.
Jacobs?
Aye.
Yokeish?
Aye.
McAvoy?
Aye.
Polinsky?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Stacker?
Aye.
And that passes eight zero.
Thank you. Now we're gonna move on to the Finance Committee. Bob Yokeish?
On Tuesday, June eighth, twenty twenty-one, the Finance Committee met to consider the writing off of nine nine thousand four hundred and seventy-eight dollars and eighty cents of uncollectible ambulance bills from twenty fifteen through twenty twenty-one. And the Finance Committee unanimously voted to recommend the City Council approve the write-off of the uncollectible ambulance bills. I move to approve the write-off of nine thousand four hundred and seventy-eight dollars and eighty cents in uncollectible ambulance bills from twenty fifteen to twenty twenty-one.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Jacobs is second.
I think maybe Tina. Tina, were you seconding that?
Oh, you can have it, Tina. I'm sorry, I didn't hear it.
I think my audio is not that great.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. We're into discussion. Is there any discussion on this item? I see none. Elena, let's do the roll.
Bowling?
Aye.
Crombie?
Aye.
Jacobs?
Aye.
Yokeish?
Aye.
McAvoy?
Aye.
Polinsky?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Stacker?
Aye.
And that passes eight zero.
All right, thank you. Now, Bob, one more.
Also, on June eighth, the Finance Committee met to consider the rescinding and refunding of property taxes due to palpable errors from the twenty twenty assessment rule in the amount of two thousand two hundred and forty-six dollars and eighty-two cents. And the Finance Committee unanimously voted to recommend the City Council approve the rescinding and refunding of the taxes. I move to approve the rescinding and refunding of two thousand two hundred and forty-six dollars I move to approve the rescinding and refunding of 2,246 dollars and eighty-two cents in property taxes due to a palpable error.
We need a second on that?
Crombie will second it.
All right, and now we're into discussion. Any discussion on that item? I see none, Elena. Let's do the roll.
Bowling.
Aye.
Crombie.
Aye.
Jacobs.
Aye.
Yocish.
Aye.
McElroy.
Aye.
Palinski.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Stacker.
Aye.
And that passes eight zero.
Thank you. Now we're gonna move on to the planning commission, Maureen, and if you would agree, what I'd like you to do is present this item, but before you make a motion to approve, let's give John Davies the opportunity to address us. And Don, I'm assuming, now I haven't looked out here, is John in our attendees?
Yes, he is.
Okay, so he'll be able to unmute himself and wait, and I don't see him, but you say he's there, so we're good.
Promoted him.
So if you're if you're good with that, Maureen, if you, oh, there I see him. Okay. So Maureen.
I have some comments I wanna, yep, I have some comments I wanna make too after I'm, after Mr. Davies talks.
All right.
Just a few things, so.
There we go, and there's John with us too. Go ahead, Maureen.
On Tuesday, June 8th, the plan commission held a public meeting to consider requests by Corus Development Group LLC for approval of a preliminary plat for Token Creek Serenity Estates containing 39 residential lots and three outlets on approximately 35.22 acres of land located south of the Token Creek and north of Stonehaven Drive. The commission found that the request for approval of the preliminary plat is in the best interest of the city and should therefore be approved, provided the conditions of approval listed in the attached resolutions are met in full by the applicant. Uh, so basically, after carefully reviewing the request and after making its findings, the plan commission voted to recommend that the city council conditionally approve the requested preliminary plat. Um, but before I make any kind of a motion, I want, I have a few things I wanna say, and like you said, Mayor Esser, I want to, uh, we wanna hear from Mr. Davies. Um, so, pardon?
Did, were you wanting to lodge on the op-
Yeah. Right, um, but I just want, I want the council to know that last week we actually, um, because there's a lot of concerns with the Token Creek watershed. And then last week, we had a CARPSY public hearing on this. And, um, that's the Capital Area Regional Planning Commission. And, um, so the, and the DNR are, they're gonna be reviewing this plot with the urban service area amendment. And any wetland filling will require permits from the DNR, and a full stormwater management plan is reviewed by not only our engineering department, but also by MSA. Um, so it's gonna be more than just our department that's reviewing this. Uh, the reserve plot, um, had the same situation with the road crossing at the north end of Thompson by the new park. So I know staff is here to provide more details if we have any questions. But now I'd like to hear, I, we would like to hear from Mr. Davis then.
So what I'd like to have happen, Maureen, is, is I would like John to speak next. And then I would like to ask Scott Kugler to explain what we have done with this and our position on this, and then um, bring in other city staff as appropriate so that, uh, the community hears where we're at with this. So
Right.
John Davies, if you would unmute yourself and start out by telling us, uh, your name, of course, and, and where you live, and then the statement that you wish to make to the city council.
Good evening. Thank you, your honor. Uh, thank you, council members, for allowing me the opportunity to speak this evening. Uh, my name's John Davies. Uh, I'm a new resident of Sun Prairie. I live at 2368 Stonehaven Drive. Uh, I am a piece of property in Shona Highlands, Lot 139, that abuts the planned development for Token Creek Serenity Estates as proposed by Corus Development. I hope all of you had the opportunity to review my comments that I submitted on this matter. I am a concerned neighbor and consider myself a conservationist. And I do not think this development, as currently proposed, is in the best interest of our most valuable Dane County water resource, the Yahar River watershed. Adding homes is fine. Adding the off-road public use trail is great and of significantly lower impact to the wetlands. Providing stormwater mitigation solutions are appropriate. Filling in thousands of acres of wetland, thousands of square feet of wetlands to a height of eight or nine feet in some places, uh, is, that's above present grade levels. All this to support a road that will have built locks adjacent to the portion of it which crosses the stream, filling those wetlands so that water may be routed down the road over the stream into a storm drain that empties into Outlet 2, a retention area, which then, if it overflows, puts the water back into the creek, seems like a ludicrous plan to me. Plan seems to fly in the face of the DNR objective to, quote, "avoid adverse wetland impacts by looking towards, towards the least environmentally damaging, practical alternative, and then minimize their effects on wetland functional values, water quality, and overall significant adverse environmental consequences," close quote. From the Wetlands Compensatory Mitigation Frequently Asked Questions page, which applied to this case, as I understand the impact area, since this will exceed 10,000 square feet, I am expressing my concerns to the council. I believe that we can do betty, better. I ask your consideration to have the developer and the engineering firm do better. I don't wanna stop people from making money from developing our city lands. I don't wanna deprive the city coffers of tax revenue, but there is a balance to be struck with nature and our future. This proposed plat does not meet that goal, in my opinion. Thank you very much.
Thank you, John. So Scott Kugler, the, this has not been a haphazard review on the part of the city and our, our engineering firm. Um, can you tell us what has led us to where this road is and the impact of the road and any trade-offs that might involve?
Sure. Uh, yeah, I'd be glad to. I, I, first thing I would like to say, I guess, is the purpose of the road there is not to convey stormwater that may be, you know, in part what the, one of the functions that it's, uh, helping to provide, but the, the purpose of the road there is actually to encourage and, um, you know, create connectivity between neighborhoods. Uh, so, and we've, you've heard us talk about connectivity in the past. Uh, you may think that this is only a block off of Stonehaven. Uh, why do we need to have connectivity through here? But I think this is an important connection. And actually, the original plan submitted by the developer here did not include that roadway, and that was requested uh, by city staff. Um, and if, that's for several reasons. Um, first of all, without that connecting roadway, each of the cul-de-sacs that would be going back in to serve the two lobes of development area on this property would exceed our city road standards. We don't allow dead-end streets, uh, of that length. Um, uh, 500 feet is the, the limit for a dead-end situation. There are times where, due to the nature of the property, we may uh, create an exception, but typically not an exception to the extent that would be required here. These would be very long dead-end streets. They create a lot of, uh, problems, uh, not only for circulation within neighborhoods, but also service delivery and so forth. So there's a lot of other considerations that go into this. Uh, when you look at, uh, this neighborhood and what is, uh, what we're connecting here, um, keep in mind that we have an elementary school to the east, we have a park to the east. We also have a neighborhood to the east, right? So we know that people in these neighborhoods are gonna have relationships. Kids are gonna wanna get around, visit friends, go visit, uh, visit the park, get to school in the morning, so forth, and, and then come back in the evening, so forth. Uh, um, and this roadway provides all of those benefits. Um, that said, we don't, you know, we, we look closely at wetland areas and we work to protect wetland areas to the extent we can. Uh, so that's a very strong interest of ours. In fact, when this plat came in, uh, the original, uh, drawing here showed this lot being entirely or these part, this, these parcels being entirely split up into lots. And the wetlands that are adjacent to this corridor and along Token Creek under that original plan that the developer submitted would all be on private lots. Um, that is not something that we felt would protect, uh, that corridor, uh, those wetlands. And so this plat was actually amended extensively, not only to add the Lonnie Lane connection, but also to pull back those lots out of the Token Creek corridor and the wetlands so that those could be uh, protected, uh, basically transferred to the public. The city will, uh, as a result of this plat, the city will own those parcels, and there'll be better control over the activities that occur back there. Um, CARPSY, during their review, Maureen mentioned, uh, uh, that CARPSY looked at this last week. They were also, uh, pretty concerned about encroachments into that corridor, so I think there's going to be some additional measures uh, that are going to be, going to be put into place here to help protect that corridor, such as signage, um, some birmingham to help, uh, control and direct runoff, uh, from going directly into the creek, making sure that, uh, uh, all that runoff gets into some sort of treatment facility and so forth. Um, and in fact, the trail will help with that as well by kind of creating, uh, a berm and a way to, uh, appropriately direct, uh, the stormwater. So, um, yes, we did look at this very closely. Um, yeah, you may look at this connection and think, well, you know, someone heading down to Stonehaven, that's a pretty minor, uh, a minor diversion, uh, I guess, and is Lonnie Lane really necessary? And we are on the side of providing the connection, um, you know, for, and I think there are a lot of things that come into play here. Uh, number one, for the pedestrian, uh, that one block, uh, may seem like it's a, a minor, uh, deviation, but for the pedestrian, and you can consider kids walking on a bad weather day or something, that's, you know, in extensive, uh, um, addition to their, their regular route to school, uh, for instance. Um, a- and the other thing that we're doing by not connecting Lonnie Lane and not collecting our local streets like that is we're forcing all of the traffic that's circulating between those areas out onto Stonehaven, one of our collector streets. And although Stonehaven may not carry a ton of traffic right now, that's definitely going to increase uh, in the future years, um, as Stonehaven gets connected to the east. Right now, it's not connected. Uh, you can't get from Bird Street all the way to this area on Stonehaven. You've gotta take other routes. Um, so this, this street is likely to function more like, uh, St. Albert the Great, and I would say perhaps carrying even more traffic, given the fact that we've got the elementary school there. So at least at certain times of the day, uh, Stonehaven is going to be, uh, much more heavily traveled. And, you know, I think a- as we've talked about connectivity in the past, it's the connections within neighborhoods that can help us manage and control the kind of, uh, traffic volumes and conflicts that we see then on those collector routes. Um, so if we can keep unnecessary trips off of those collector routes, that's the, the goal. Um, you know, so that circulation within the neighborhood can happen without, uh, impeding that, uh, uh, you know, the collector routes are intended to provide a, a little different uh, function. Um, and then also, you know, just consider, you know, a, a family that has a child, um, the western lobe of this subdivision that is comfortable, you know, having their kid walk to school along Lonnie Lane, the local no, local, uh, residential street. Are they going to feel as comfortable if their chil- child has to go down to Stonehaven and walk along the busier collector street to make that route? Um, probably not. So we see a lot of benefits to the, the connection. Uh, yes, there is a wetland impact, um, and that's something that we typically try to avoid. Uh, but the ordinance per, our, our city ordinances and, uh, uh, you know, DNR standards and, uh, the, the way CARPSY looks at these things, um, some of those disturbances are, um, unavoidable. Some of them are, you know, necessary to achieve other means. And we look at trying to minimize, uh, that encroachment. Um, I talked to Tom Vif this afternoon about the stormwater plan. He's going to look to see if that extensive level of fill, uh, is necessary, uh, in order to, uh, um, get Lonnie Lane, Lonnie Lane through there. Perhaps we can lower the grade and perhaps, uh, uh, minimize the disturbance there. We'll take a look at that before this, uh, this final, this, this, uh, project gets final platted and, uh, the, um, civil plans get approved. Um, he suspects that there may be an issue with sanitary sewer service and the depth that we, that we need to provide cover over the sanitary as well. It's not just the storm, storm sewer, but, uh, so I, I'm gonna recommend to you that we continue to require Lonnie Lane. I think it's, uh, you know, anytime you're looking at these things, there's a balance, right? There's, uh, um, positives and negatives, uh, and I think that the positives are related to the connectivity, uh, here outweigh the negatives of disturbing a small portion of this wetland. It's at kind of the, um, the outer reaches of the, the wetland away from Token Creek. Um, I think if this were happening right on the Token Creek corridor or much closer, we'd be, um, much less, uh, uh, open to, to this kind of disturbance, but we feel that the trade-off here is, uh, a worthwhile one. And we're gonna continue to recommend, um, that we connect that street.
Okay, all right, thank you. So, Maureen, back to you. Are you ready to go ahead with this? You're, you're muted, Maureen.
I'm gonna make a motion that we conditionally approve the requested preliminary plat. As we quit, as, um, um, as based on what staff is recommending.
All right. And is there a second, Steve?
No, I was just gonna ask what the condition is, Maureen.
Um, the condition is, I don't have it in front of me, but it's right in your packet.
Yeah, I just think that should be.
And um, oh, it's not in the packet. I don't think so.
Sorry.
So on the last page of the recommendation. Oh, on the very last page, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, 'cause I'm sorry, the writing's too small on my other computer. Um, it's, the approval of this plat is based on the letter of the intent dated April 26, 2021, and accompanying plans and subsequent revisions submitted in association um, with file PC 212932. Um, and a reduction of the required rear yard setback from 30 feet to 20 feet from the provision of a buffer yard as determined through Section 17.24.070 of the city zoning ordinance is hereby approved for lots six through eight, 10, 12, 13, 18 through 24. Such butter buff, buffer yard shall be located along the entire length of the rear lot line and along both sidelines or lot lines, a distance of 30 feet from the rear lot line toward the front lot line. Prior to the sign, or the city signing the preliminary plat, the following shall be subject to review and approval by the planning director, and that's the locations shall be established on the plat for cluster mailbox units or on either privately held lots or outlot that meet the city's ordinance and specifications for citing CBUs. Language for dedication of Outlet 3 at the southeast corner of Amanda Avenue in Lonnie Lane shall be revised to be privately owned and maintained. The locations of utility easements shall be subject to review and approval by Sun Prairie Utilities. And prior to the issue of building the permits within the Serenity Estates plat, the existing 25-foot wide sanitary sewer easement within Amanda Avenue shall be vacated. Prior to recording easement releases shall be reviewed for approval by the city attorney. The developers shall be responsible for designing permitting and installing a 10-foot wide asphalt multi-use path in Outlet 1 as follows. Extending along the external boundary of the environmental corridor to connect to Lonnie Lane behind lots 14 and 17 through 24, and proper stream crossing with culvert design. The developers shall provide grading and construction plans for a 10-foot wide asphalt multi-use path in Outlet 1 behind lots nine through 11 to be installed at a later date by the city of Sun Prairie. And then all DNR permits and construction associated with filling of wetlands, including within the right-of-way of Lonnie Lane, shall be responsible, the responsibility of the developer. Any chance of use of the properties currently qualifying for agriculture use assessment will be subject to the agriculture use conversion fee and commercial class, um, assessment at the time of development. And then, prior to the commencement of construction activities for any development phase, a development agreement will be needed to address the timing, installation, and oversight of public improvements, the payment development fees, and other development-related issues. And final approval of this preliminary plat is contingent upon the approval of an urban service area boundary amendment by the Capital Area Regional Planning that will bring these lands into the city's urban service area for provision of water and sanitary sewer services. Um, and the aforementioned approval of the USA Boundary Change is needed prior to the city signing the preliminary plat indicating all conditions of preliminary plat approval have been met. So that was a mouthful.
Thank you.
All right, is there a second now?
McElroy seconds.
Thank you. And now we're into discussion on this item. Teresa?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I appreciate, Maureen, you reading through all of the conditions. Um, that certainly helps in some of these concerns with, uh, Lonnie Lane. However, I for one don't actually feel comfortable voting on this without hearing more from CARPSY and the DNR on this. Just seeing how it's platted. Just seeing how it's platted out so close to these wetlands, there's only a small. Subset that I'm even comfortable approving tonight, and that's lot twenty-five. Uh, through thirty-two, basically, just on the easternmost edge, everything else. Um, I'm not comfortable approving. As a canoeist, I see the impacts of people. And new development along our waterways and it, it's not just building near these, it's what people. Put on their lawns that gets into our waterways. It's not just the road, it's how we actually treat the land we're living on, um. The grasses and everything, so I, I'm not real excited to do this one.
There additional discussion?
Scott, what happens if we were to, um, if we were to postpone this and have this go back to the planning commission? I mean, could we do that or would it?
Um, certainly it's within your purview to that. If you have further questions, I guess if it goes back to the planning commission, I would suggest that. Um, provide some, some good direction as to what additional questions you're looking for them to review. I will say most of the issues that have been discussed came up at the Carp C meetings. And uh, so the developer is uh, responding to uh. Will be responding to those questions at the next meeting and may come back with some additional provisions to address those. I mean, the fertilizer question was there. Um, I don't think we can prohibit in any effective way people using fertilizer on their lawns, but there are some things. We can do through, um, you know, how we plant the buffer behind and uh, you know, it was also pointed out. That uh, you know, actually with the farming operations that are going there on right there now, that are sheet flowing into Token Creek. Uh, we can do a better job of managing uh, any of those uh, you know pesticides and fertilizers that uh. Might go on lawns through the stormwater system and, and the way we can treat the water before it does enter the creek. Um, the, the stormwater plan that will get implemented, um, you know, it focuses quite a bit on infiltration. And the idea of trying to get that water into the ground to the extent we can before it even gets to the creek. Um, so I, I will say the Carp C review process is pretty extensive. Um, things can't go on if the DNR, you know, doesn't uh. Uh, approve for the, the urban service area extension. So I think the, we're protected there, whether we want to wait that out. And make sure that that's positive before we vote. Um, I, I think that uh, is an option. I'm sure the, the developer unfortunately isn't here tonight, and I, I think that we may have had a little uh, snafu last week with Tim Semen leaving, and I'm not sure that they were. Provided uh, uh, notice that the meeting was going to be occurring tonight, so I'm concerned about that. Um, or they would rather see the vote move forward uh, plans, but you'd certainly within your right to send it back and delay if you think that's prudent.
Right, and the fact, even if the, if the DNR, I mean, if the DNR doesn't approve it, then we won't be able to move forward anyways.
We wouldn't be able to extend.
Right, yeah.
Serve the lot, yeah, sanitary services.
Right.
So Tina was trying to get in Steve before, so let's get to Tina and then we'll get to you, Steve.
Um, thank you, Mayor. I, I just, I just want to really echo the how fragile these ecosystems are. And how we need to do our best in preserving our wetlands as well as it's a watershed, so. Um, I just really want to emphasize that I do not, this is, this would be a hard no for me at this point. Um, I should, maybe I, I'm not supposed to say what I'm gonna vote, but I just. It's, it feels like we need some answers and clarity before, and I would, I would. Appreciate if we did tip a really hard look at this one, because there's so much happening with technology and technique and sustainability and. Everything, I, I think that we could do better.
Steve?
Thank you, Your Honor. Yeah, I just wanted to echo what Alder Stevens said. You're spot on, Teresa. Yeah, I think it's too early to vote and then regret our decision either way, and so. If we were to wait on this, would we have an option of tabling it? I think we need to, if we're gonna table, I think we need a date. And I'm not sure when Carp C is going to be ready. I don't think we can make it contingent upon Carp C uh. Voting on this or coming up with an answer. So I guess I would look at what options there are, and I don't think it, I don't think Marine's motion has been seconded yet, has it?
It was by Terry.
Oh, yes, I did, yep.
Okay, then what?
Oh, and Carp C doesn't meet until July eighth, and I really feel that we are. It's the, it's the DNR that is going to be recommending this and. I, I just don't think we should postpone it, but that's just my thought on it.
Scott, you wanted to say something?
Uh, I was just going to say what Marine just said, which is the Carp C is scheduled to take this up again on July eighth. Their process involves a public hearing one month and then uh, and, and questions and discussion. And then uh, an opportunity for the developer to address those items. And the actual decision or the recommendation gets made the following month. So that's scheduled by eight.
Yep, and the public hearing was last, last week, so, yeah.
So Scott, if, what would happen if we've got a motion to approve in front of us, what would happen if we voted down that emotion? Where are we then?
You are essentially uh, essentially denying the preliminary plat. And I guess the, the concern I would have there, if that's the, the route that uh, the council is considering going, I guess I would prefer this to be postponed at least one meeting. Um, to allow the applicant, I, I'm, I'm worried now this evening, uh, since they're not here, that they weren't notified. To attend the evening, this, this evening, and they could perhaps answer some of these questions, or at least should have a chance. Um, so I guess if that's the, the route that the council is deciding to go, I would prefer. A uh, postponement for one meeting to make sure that they can attend, that they can hear the conversation, that they can respond. Uh, before that action would be taken.
So July sixth. To wait a year, correct?
Uh, not on a plat, though they could refile or, or the council could vote to reconsider it at some point.
Okay.
So July sixth, Scott, are you saying we table to July sixth, would you think might be a better choice at this moment?
Uh, yeah, I mean, the, the date I think is up to the council. Uh, we do have ninety days from the time that they filed. To take some action, which I believe puts us uh, well beyond July, July sixth as well, so uh.
Yeah, we'd have to do it on July twentieth.
July twentieth, okay.
Yeah, because Carp C is July eighth.
If, if the intent is to wait for Carp C to, to discuss one more time and make a recommendation, right, it'd be following meeting.
So we can do a motion at any time to postpone?
Can I change my motion then?
We can do a motion over that, Marine.
Yeah.
Yeah, you have to ask your second. You have to ask, right, Alder McElroy.
Right.
Well, the procedure would be to do a motion to postpone, right? And that'd be the right procedural way? So let's just do that.
I'll make the motion to postpone until July twentieth.
I'll second.
And any discussion on that motion?
Mayor, do you mind waiting for just one moment? Uh, I want to connect one procedural item here. I just want to find out, uh, uh, I want to look at the filing date, uh, that this was filed.
February twenty-sixth, I think.
Yeah, we should be fine, as long as we act before the end of July, we should be within that ninety-day period. Uh, so I, I just wanted to make sure we weren't putting ourselves in the position of having this thing get automatically approved because of our inaction. But I think we're good through the end of July.
So before we vote on this, Scott, at this point, we're just saying that we're gonna put it off to the twentieth. Because maybe the applicant wasn't aware that we were dealing with it this evening and they want to be present. Is that the only substantive thing that will change?
Uh, well, is that question for me or for the council?
It is, no, it is for you, Scott. Uh, procedurally, I meant, I maybe substantive was the wrong word. And nothing else is gonna change between now and the twentieth other than the applicant being here.
Correct, and it would, you know, uh, just from a process standpoint, it gives them a chance to respond. To the concerns that are raised and be able to address those. I don't think it's fair to take action on the plat if it's going to be negative. Um, if they weren't notified of the meeting. Uh, they've been very involved in all the meetings. They had several people at the. The Carp C meeting and at the Plan Commission meeting, and I'm certain that they would have been here this evening if they realized that we were, we were discussing the plat. Um, yeah, so I, I did a quick follow-up with Sarah by text here while we were uh. Uh, going through other items and she is not certain that they were notified. That's usually something that Tim uh, took care of. And I, I can't say whether Tim took care of that last week, so I think it would be wise to wait. Uh, it also gives an opportunity. Some council members were concerned about uh, you know, hearing what Carp C had to say, gives an opportunity to. You know, hear what that recommendation is before you take action as well.
Okay, so we've got a motion, a second to table to July twentieth. Uh, Mike, did you want to speak?
I did, it's, it's my understanding that right now we can only talk about whether or not we should postpone. That's, that's under consideration. Right. So, um, I, I think the answer is yes. Um, I, I don't question the, the acumen or the process. By which Scott and Tom arrived at this. Um, but, and I really commend Alder Stevens for. The specifics, I mean, I just had an icky feeling, but she had specifics like this, this, so I think that, and, and the reservations that. Um, Tina had as well, I think postponing is, is the right thing to do, and Scott said that it seems that we, if we do this in the right way. It's not gonna put um, the applicants out.
Okay, any more discussion or are you ready to vote on this motion to postpone? Alright, Elena, let's get that roll.
Uh, Bowling. Crombie.
Hi.
Jacobs.
Hi.
Yocish.
Hi.
McElroy.
Hi.
Polanski.
Hi.
Stevens.
Hi.
Stocker.
Hi.
And that passes eight-zero, uh, the motion to postpone.
Okay, and the previous motion then, we, we never voted on, just goes away?
Yes.
Yeah, alright. Okay, very good. We're moving on to the Public Works Committee, Terry.
I believe Adam Schleicher is going to share.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Go ahead, Jeremy.
Yeah, so I, I think she's turning it over to you, Adam, and it's the resolution approving the twenty-twenty. Compliance Maintenance Annual Report for the waste, for the Water Pollution Control Facility, right, Adam?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. We actually have Jeremy Kramer on the meeting tonight, and he can uh, introduce that item better than I can.
Good evening, Mayor and council members.
Jeremy.
It's good to be here. Um, tonight, before you, I have the twenty-twenty CMAR. So this is basically the report card for our sanitary sewer system and our wastewater treatment plant. It covers ten specific areas. We received nine As and one D. And this is based on a four-point-O GPA. Most people are familiar with, with that, you know, four-point-O GPA. We've received a three-point-five-nine, so pretty good. But because of the D we received in our biosolids area, um, that's. The material we land apply and put on fields as fertilizer. Um, what had happened there was we actually, our hauler um, over-applied on two fields. And basically, we have to meet a loading rate for nitrogen, and we were just over that loading rate for nitrogen. So that was the reason for the D. Um, we need to take some action because we received that D, and the action we took was we produced a. Biosolids Management Plan, and that is in the packet. If anyone would like to see that or if they have any questions. The other action we took is we no longer use the surfaces of that company for hauling. And land applying, we have a new hauler and land appiler. So those are the, the actions we took. And overall, everything is in pretty good shape for the, the wastewater department, and. I'm hoping this can be approved.
Thank you, Jeremy. So Terry, do you want to make the motion to approve?
I'd be happy to do that, Mr. Mayor. I make the motion that we approve the. Compliance Maintenance Annual Report for Water Pollution Control Facility.
And we need a second on that.
One second then.
Thank you, and now we're into discussion. Is there any discussion on this item? Mike?
Yeah, uh, Jeremy, job well done. That's, I wish my kids brought report cards home like this. Thanks.
Steve?
Yeah, thank you, Your Honor. Yeah, I, I echo that again, Jeremy, you're doing a fantastic job out there. When we talk about biosolids, um, there's. There's some uh, CIP dollars in there, in the, in the budget for. Long-term solution also, correct, or we're, we won't be hauling them?
Yes, Elder Stocker, that, I'm glad you brought that up. That is absolutely part of the, the future plan is to address those biosolids. Address them in a sustainable way, actually create a, a potential profitable product. Um, something that we could bring in some revenue generation, so absolutely, within about four years, that's, that will be in the works.
So you did speak to our friends in Beaver Dam?
Yes.
Yeah, very good. They're doing a, yeah, they're doing a great job up there. I'm glad, glad we were able to adopt that. Thank you.
Additional discussion on this item? I see none, Elena, let's do the roll.
Bowling.
Hi.
Crombie.
Hi.
Jacobs.
Hi.
Yocish.
Hey.
McElroy.
Hi.
Polanski.
Hi.
Stevens.
Hi.
Stocker.
Hi.
And that carries eight-zero.
Thank you, and you've got another one, Terry.
Thank you, Your Honor. I believe this is also Adam Schleicher.
Hmm.
Yes.
Alright.
Thank you. So this item is a, a change in scope budget amendment to amend the fleet replacement plan to purchase a, a crack router. Instead of the um, asphalt roller that was budgeted. Uh, staff identified this crack roller, or this crack router, I'm sorry, was in need of urgent replacement. It being an older model and does not have a, a dust recovery system, and with the newer standards for cutting silica, which is in concrete. While through OSHA, we need a dust recovery system, and we are doing the cutting and grinding of concrete, so. Uh, staff recommends that this is a more urgent need to replace the crack router than the roller, so that's what this um, resolution is for.
Alright. Terry, do you want to make that motion?
I'd be happy to do that, sir. Um, I moved to change in scope the budget amendment. To the fleet replacement plan and fund for the purchase for a crack router.
I'll second.
Alright, now we're into discussion. Any discussion on that item? I see none, Elena, let's do the roll.
Bowling.
Hi.
Crombie.
Hi.
Jacobs.
Hi.
Yocish.
Hi.
McElroy.
Hi.
Polanski.
Hi.
Stevens.
Hi.
Stocker.
Hi.
And that passes eight-zero.
Hey, and then you've got one more, Terry.
Actually, I'm going to pass this to Adam again.
Alright.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. So, so this is an ordinance repealing and recreating two sections, uh, section twelve-point-one-six-oh-two-oh. And section twelve-point-two-eight dot oh-one, uh, that covers privileged grants in the right-of-way. So currently, our ordinance does not allow um, for a private entity, whether it's a landowner, a developer, and an HOA. Uh, to maintain medians or other public areas in the city. Um, that is allowed per state statute with a grant of privilege in the right-of-way, so what this ordinance does. Um, this change in ordinance allows us to issue privilege agreements to private parties wanting to maintain medians. Um, such as those you see around the city that are maintained by HOAs or private entities, so this way. And it gets us in line with state law.
Right. How do you feel about that one, Terry? Want to make that one?
Certainly. I move to repeal and recreate section twelve-dot-sixteen-dot. Zero-two-zero and amending section twelve-dot-twenty-eight-dot-zero-one-zero. Authorizing privilege to occupy, obstruct, or excavate public grounds and rights of way pursuant to Wisconsin statute. Six-six-dot-oh-four-two-five.
Jacobs will second.
Thank you, and we're into discussion on that. Any discussion? I see none. Let's get the roll.
Bowling.
Hi.
Crombie.
Hi.
Jacobs.
Hi.
Yocish.
Hi.
McElroy.
Hi.
Polanski.
Hi.
Stevens.
Hi.
Stocker.
Hi.
And that carries eight-zero.
Okay, and now we move down to new business, and we have consideration, discussion, and possible action. An ordinance to temporarily consolidate Sun Prairie polling places to one location. For the twenty-twenty-one. for the 2021 special election to be held on August 10th, 2021. Alana, do you have some words for us on that?
I sure do. Three special elections, uh, is almost unheard of. So I am here again, um, with another ordinance requesting approval to consolidate to one polling place, but this time for the August 10th special election to fill a vacancy for Dane County Board of Supervisors District 20. Um, this affects wards 23, 26 and 27 within the city of Sun Prairie. These are all empty fields and have no registered voters. So just like the election being held today, just closed 10 minutes ago. Um, even though there are no voters in these wards, we do still have to run the election. Um, the reason is for in the rare circumstance or chance that someone, you know, pitches a tent in one of these fields and says they live there and they want to vote, then we have to be ready to serve that voter. Um, so we would like to consolidate to City Hall. Some minimal staff will be needed that day. Um, and then also should a primary be needed for this election? It has been scheduled to coincide with the special election already being held on July 13th. So staff is requesting approval of the ordinance consolidating to one polling place located at City Hall for the special election to be held on August 10th.
Thank you. Would somebody be willing?
Jacobs will make a motion to approve per staff recommendation.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. We're into discussion. Is there any?
I hope we don't have Jimmy the Groundhog vote or somebody else.
Parker, Parker. Alana, let's read the roll.
Yes, uh, Bowling.
Hi.
Crombie.
Hi.
Jacobs.
Hi.
Yocish.
Hi.
McElroy.
Hi.
Polansky.
Hi.
Stevens.
Hi.
Stocker.
Hi.
And that passes eight zero.
Good. And we're down to referrals to the committee of the whole. Are there any referrals this evening? Haven't heard any, I don't think. How about announcements? Any announcements? Nothing?
See you at Strawberry Fest Saturday.
I want to. I want to mention that, uh, we have been served in this body in the committee of the whole by Jennifer Wood. And Jennifer will leave us at the end of the week. So Alana, if you would pass on to Jennifer our appreciation for her fine services whenever she was here in place of you.
Absolutely.
All right. Motion to adjourn would be in order.
Move to adjourn.
Seriously. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Us name, we are adjourned. Thank you for your time this evening.
Good to see you all.
Good night, everyone.